You can remove your face mask when you are seated. The external doors will be opened periodically to provide ventilation. Any requests to speak must be made using your handset. If you encounter any problems with your handset, please raise your hand in the air and a member of the Committee Services team will assist you. Once invited to speak, please stand up and face forward and wait until one of the microphone operators is in the proximity. The microphones are being wiped down after each use. Please be patient as the staff do their best to coordinate the arrangements. Before I move on to today's business detailed on the agenda, I would also like to welcome to the meeting members of the public. You are very welcome to attend and observe proceedings. However, I request politely that you do not disroot the meeting. Can I move on to item one? The minutes to confirm on the meeting held on the 26th of January 2022. Can I have a mover, please?
Move the minutes, Chair, Council of Wiltshire.
Can I have a second, please? Members, are the minutes agreed? Can I move on to item two, declaration of interest? Does any member wish to declare an interest in relation to any item of business on the agenda? Can I move to item three, chairs' announcements? Colleagues, in view that the main focus of this morning's meeting is to set the budget and council tax, I am seeking agreement from the council to waiver standing orders to allow for the extension of the meeting should it go beyond two and a half hours. Can I have a second, please? Thank you. Can I ask the council to agree this course of action? Once again, I would like to welcome you all to the meeting. Can I again ask that everyone is respectful to each other during the meeting? Robust debate is part of the democratic process, but I would ask members to respect the views of others and not to point fingers during debate. I would also remind members that it is not appropriate to shout at other councillors across the floor during debate. We have microphones which allow everyone to be heard, so please use them when speaking. Some members have hearing aids and shouting does not improve that, so please limit that. Where points of order are raised, once a ruling has been made on the advice of the head of Legal and Democratic Services, it will not be revisited. Can I move to item number four, the leader's report? Can I invite the leader of the council to present her report, please?
Hello? Right, it is now. Good morning, everyone. I hope you're all well and have not been too badly affected by the recent bad weather, which has once again seen our county battered with high winds, heavy rain, and in some areas, snow. We have continued to work closely with our partners in the County Durham Local Resilience Forum with efforts to deal with any damage that is still ongoing. And my thanks go to everyone who's been involved in the response and also to residents themselves, who have again rallied around to support one another. In the past few weeks, we have also had confirmation from government that County Durham is to be one of nine areas selected to take forward proposals for devolved powers. We have worked extremely hard with government to set out why County Durham needs a devolution deal and how this will help us to invest in our local communities going forward. Clearly, we have set out a strong and compelling argument to get to this point, and we look forward to further discussions with government on how a deal will work for us. The last two years have been a challenge for everyone, but with more local control over economic regeneration, housing, infrastructure, and resources, we can look to the future with confidence and optimism. I can assure you all that we will be working extremely hard to secure the best possible devolution deal for County Durham, and that includes working with all six of our local MPs, and we'll set out the next steps once we've had further discussions with government. At the beginning of the month, we submitted further details of our bid to secure the UK City of Culture title for 2025 to government. The bid has been submitted with our principal partner, Durham University, on behalf of Culture Durham. If we are successful, it could mean millions of extra visitors to the region, the potential for thousands of new jobs, and a significant boost for levelling up. I'd like to congratulate Sarah Slaven on being appointed as the permanent managing director of Business Durham, our business support service. Sarah previously held the post of operations director at Business Durham before becoming interim managing director in early 2020. I hope you will all join me in wishing her well. Our Stronger Families Initiative is to be extended for a further three years, following news of a £2.2 million grant from the government. The scheme provides tailored support to vulnerable families, helping them to access help to address a range of issues with the support of dedicated key workers from the council and fellow members of the Early Help Partnership. Last week, I welcomed Henry Murrison, director of the Northern Powerhouse Partnership, to County Durham. During his visit, Henry and I attended Net Parkney at Sedgefield, and we also visited Peter Lee, where I showed him how our Durham Works scheme is helping young people into employment and training. Durham Works is supported by the European Social Fund, but this funding will come to an end in December 2023, and it's vital that we secure alternative funds to continue this important work. So, looking ahead, the county will next week play host to a major conference, when the North East Satellite Applications Centre of Excellence holds the New Frontier North East Space Conference. The event at the Radisson Blue in Durham on Wednesday, the 2nd of March, will give businesses the chance to learn more about the growing space industry in the region. Topics to be discussed range from building a UK space economy to how science and innovation can be a catalyst for economic prosperity, and people registered to attend from all over the UK and globally. So, Chair, that concludes my report.
Do any members have any questions on the report? councillor Marshall.
Chair, thanks. councillor Marshall, leader of the Labour Group and local member in Stanley. I'm just wondering, in light of the leader's report and the announcement from government that they're open to discuss a devolution deal, when the Cabinet and the leadership of the council will set out its plans for what its ask is from government to members, and more importantly, our partners and our communities across the county, there's some massive opportunities for us in County Durham with any devolution deal, but there's also some massive risks, not least the risk of losing out on the €300 million additional funding that was set upon in County Durham had we remained in the EU through the Shared Prosperity and Community Renewal Funding. The government have previously signalled that they wouldn't give us any less than this amount, but those sounds have gone quite heavily. And this funding funds a lot of our work, including the Durham Works programme that the leader of the council alluded to, so I'll just be helpful.
Member, could you make a question rather than a speech, please?
Sorry, I am asking a question, Chair. So, when will the Cabinet and the coalition set out to the council and the community our ask of government? Thank you.
Thank you, member.
Thanks, councillor Marshall. We will be setting things out, and I would invite you to come in as leader of the opposition once we've got that, but first of all, we have to have the discussion with government, because what we've got so far is a white paper, and that's the next process, to speak to them, to see what options are available for a county deal. There is no precedent with a county deal, we will be the first ones to have one, so we will be there asking for everything. And the reason Henry Murrison came last week is because I stood up at a conference last week before last in Liverpool and was one of only three people able to ask the secretary of state, Michael Gove, a question around that shared prosperity fund, and that's exactly why Henry came up to see us and to have a visit with me, because I'd asked that question and to go through the answer that was given, that it would be shared fairly. I will be holding them accountable to demonstrate what shared fairly means.
councillor Gunn.
Thank you, Chair. I would like to ask the leader, on her final point she raised about the huge conference that's taking place at the Radisson Blue regarding space and the opportunities in terms of development with businesses, I think one of the key things is around whether young people are actually involved as well. My question is around whether this big conference with the great and the good around businesses and everything else, whether there will be an opportunity for young people in County Durham to actually have some involvement in that conference. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Gunn, for the question. As I said, the county will be playing host to the conference, we're not organising it, but I shall go back to the organisers and ask that question for you and make sure you get a written response. Thank you.
There's no one else registered. Can I ask the council to note the report? Thank you. Can we move to item five, questions from the public? No questions have been received for today's meeting. Can I move on to item number six, petitions? No petitions have been received for today's meeting. We move now on to item seven, the report of the cabinet. Can I ask the leader of the council to present the report, please?
Chair, present the report as tabled within the papers. Thank you.
As no questions have been submitted, can I ask the council to note the report? Thank you. Can I move to item eight, Budget 2022/23, Report under section 25 of the Local Government Act of 2003? Can I ask the corporate director of resources to present the report?
Thank you, Chair, and good morning, members. This report fulfils our statutory responsibilities under section 25 of the Local Government Act 2003, which states that when an authority is considering its budget and setting its council tax for the forthcoming year, its chief finance officer, me, is required to give a professional opinion on two things: firstly, the robustness of the estimates made in the preparation of the budget and for the purpose of calculation what is known as the council tax requirement; and secondly, the adequacy of reserves allowed in the budget proposals. As the council's chief finance officer, the arrangements I've put in place with my team to discharge these responsibilities and my professional opinion on these matters is something I take incredibly seriously. This report gives you the assurance that you need in terms of relying on the figures and the underpinning assumptions that have formed the basis of the budget proposals you will be considering shortly. In terms of the robustness of the estimates, I've set out in sections nine to fourteen of the report the processes that are being followed in preparing the budgets and the reports to be considered today. The budget proposals presented today are the end of a long and in-depth process, and I'm happy to give my opinion that based on the work undertaken, the estimates can be considered to be both robust and can be relied upon when taking your decisions today. In terms of the adequacy of the council's reserves, I've set out at sections fifteen to twenty-seven details of the best practice guidance published by SIPF in terms of the level, purpose, and reasons for holding reserves, and as members will be aware, using reserves to balance recurrent expenditure is not a sustainable long-term solution. In the report, I've highlighted the significant uncertainty that exists beyond next financial years, we await the outcome of the fair funding review, and the significant budget challenges we will face from pay and price inflation, the enduring demographic pressures in our looked-after children's budgets, and the potential long-term impact of the pandemic on our budgets as key risks, alongside the impacts of the fair cost of care exercise and the changes to adult social care charging over the next couple of years. The recommended policy on reserves, taking all these factors into account, is set out at section twenty-five of the report, and I'm wholly satisfied that the EMR reserves that have been set aside are for specific legitimate purposes. In conclusion, Chair, in my professional opinion, if the council are to accept the cabinet's budget proposals, including its proposals in terms of council tax increases, then I am satisfied that the risks identified in the budget-setting process alongside our track record of managing our finances mean that we have adequate reserves as we move forward. The recommendations, Chair, are set out in section four, which are for the council to have regard to this report and my views when considering an improvement in the budget and the level of council tax for 2022/23. Thank you, Chair.
Does any member wish to speak on the report? Can I ask the council to note the statement when approving the budget and setting the level of council tax for 2022/23? Thank you, members. Before we move on to the next item, can I remind the council that under paragraph 14.6 of the council's procedure rules, recorded votes must take place for each of the budget and council tax items? councillor Sexton?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Could I move a motion without notice to take the debate on items nine and 10 together as we usually do, given they're inextricably linked? Thank you, Chair.
Can I have a second, please, for that? Thank you. Does council agree the motion to take the two items together? Can I ask the head of Legal and Democratic Services, who will provide an explanation to council on how this will work, including the times allowed for members making speeches?
Thank you, Chair. Good morning, members. Considering the two items together impact upon the length of time that members can speak, the proposer and seconder of the motion and group leaders have 10 minutes, so effectively the double the allotted time in a normal debate. There are some exceptions to this today, in that councillor Bell, although a group leader, will be seconding the budget in his capacity as deputy leader, and therefore he will speak for six minutes. Councillor Rob Crute, as deputy leader of the Labour Group and shadow portfolio holder for finance, will respond to the budget, and the chair has agreed that he can speak for 10 minutes, but councillor Marshall will only have three minutes. All other speakers have three minutes, and the leader has a six-minute right of reply at the end of the debate before it's put to a vote. The deadline for amendments was noon on Friday, the 18th of February, and none were received. Amendments received after this deadline could have only been accepted in exceptional circumstances with agreement of the chair, section 151 officer, and myself as monitoring officer. No such amendments have been received, and no further ones can be moved from the floor today. Once the budget has been moved and seconded, the chair of overview and scrutiny will be invited to speak on the report, and then the chair will invite any questions on the report. Please bear this in mind when registering to speak, because it will be questions first, and then we will move into the debate. If you ask a question on the report, you are still able to speak on the debate, and the chair will issue a reminder in due course. The usual rules of debate apply. Each member can speak once on the motion, and as I say, councillor Hopgood, as the leader, will have a right of reply before the vote, and the chair has already indicated that there will be recorded votes on both agenda items separately at the end. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you. Members, before we move on to the next items, please remember to be respectful to each other. Thank you. Items nine and 10, medium-term financial plan 2022/23 to 2025/26, and the revenue and capital budget 2022/23, and council tax setting in order to meet the county council's council tax requirements for 2022/23. Can I ask the leader of the council to present and move the reports?
Thanks, Chair. Chair, it is with great pleasure that I am moving the cabinet's budget proposals for 2022/23 and the medium-term financial plan for the period 2022/23 to 2025/26. These are the first set of budget proposals the new joint administration have prepared. They are budget proposals that clearly demonstrate the scale of our ambition for this council and for our county, with significant new capital investments, recurrent investment in key frontline services, and the utilisation of £10 million of reserves to invest in some one-off initiatives that will have a lasting legacy. These are a set of budget proposals that are prudent and affordable, with no increase in core council tax proposed and no reliance on using reserves to balance the base budget next year, something this council has not been able to achieve in the current year or in previous years, Chair. These are budget proposals that have been informed by our community conversations and consultations, and which target investment in areas that will have a significant impact on people's lives. At each stage, we have sought to involve scrutiny in the budget-setting process, and the report includes details of the feedback from those meetings and from wider engagements through our area action partnerships and through engagement with business ratepayers and with trade unions. The budget has once again been prepared against a backdrop of significant uncertainty that exists beyond the next financial year, particularly in relation to the additional new service grant funding we are set to receive next year, as we await the publication of the Fair Funding Review later this year. The report provides a comprehensive and detailed overview of the comprehensive spending review announcements on the 27th of October last year and the local government finance settlement for 2022/23, which we received on the 16th of December. It is fair to say that in comparison to previous years, the council received a reasonably good financial settlement, with a significant year-on-year increase uplift in funding, better than we had been anticipating, meaning that we have had an average increase in our core spending power. That said, we still lag behind the national average core spending power per dwelling, as the report outlines. If we had the funding in line with the national average per dwelling, be it from additional government grant or from council tax revenues, then we would have a further £39 million available to us. Alas, we do not. The council's low tax base and consequential low tax raising capacity continues to constrain and place pressure on our budgets. This is a matter we have discussed many times in this chamber and is something we will continue to press government on in terms of rectifying this position in the Fair Funding Review formula. A key risk for the council next year and potentially beyond is the ongoing and potential long-term impact of Covid. There is no new Covid grant funding available next year, and whilst we have had to adjust our waste disposal budgets and include growth in that area in the 22/23 budget, we simply do not know at this stage if and when income in places like this leisure centre will return to pre-pandemic levels. Usage is increasing as we have come out of lockdown, but we will need to carefully monitor this position across the coming 12 months and reflect on this in preparing the 2023/24 budgets. Pay and price inflation is another significant concern. The budget proposals include significant additional budget uplifts in our energy budgets and prudent assumptions in terms of other inflationary pressures. Unavoidable budget pressures we have had to accommodate total £45 million, and these are set out in detail in table four within section 104 of the report. Key elements include the pay and price inflation, the impact of the national living wage increase on our adult social care contracts, home-to-school transport, waste disposal contract increases, and demographic pressures in our looked-after children budgets. Despite these pressures, and as a consequence of the continued strong financial management of the council's finances, I am very pleased that we are making some significant and much-needed investments in key frontline services. Services that matter to local people and will make a real difference to people's lives. The budgets next year make provision for: £13 million in relation to pay and price inflation next year, which includes £3 million in relation to energy prices; £12 million for adult social care fee inflation; £4.4 million for children's social care next year, which is on top of the additional £4.5 million budget transfer we agreed in the current year, and represents a circa £10 million year-on-year budget uplift in this volatile area of our revenue budgets; £4.4 million in our waste disposals budgets, in part due to the ongoing impact of the pandemic; £2.6 million additional budget for home-to-school transport; £313,000 of investment in our low-carbon team staffing; £250,000 investment in drainage inspections; £100,000 for bin replacement; £600,000 to continue with the free after-two parking initiative; £890,000 to tackle workforce development challenges in our community protection teams, who have been so important through the pandemic and where there is a national skills shortage; £130,000 of investment in our street scene services; £120,000 of investment in neighbourhood wardens; £250,000 of investment in countryside management, local nature reserves, and public rights of way; and £360,000 of investment in allotments, management, and maintenance. Our capital investment plans are both ambitious and significant, with just under £113 million of new capital investments and an overall capital programme in excess of £600 million included in our MTFP, further demonstrating the scale of ambition that we hold. The capital programme, including details of the new additions to the programme and the capital financing requirements linked to the programme, are set out in sections 151 to 170, with the updated capital strategy and details of the individual schemes set out at appendix nine and 10. New schemes include further investment in the new build primary at Spennymower and the rebuild of Belmont Community School and Church of England Primary School; investment in new children's homes as part of the Looked After Children's Sufficiency Strategy, and significant additional investment in our highways, including targeted investment to tackle the condition of unclassified roads across the county; investment in playing pitches and in allotments; significant investment in our net zero and decarbonisation aspirations for our buildings; and a new climate change community loan scheme; investment in flood prevention in our parks and countryside estate, including public rights of way, which have been neglected for far too long. This administration is delivering on its commitments to raise the bar and scale and ambition for our county, as is also demonstrated by our City of Culture bid. Of course, the one-year settlement from government is disappointing, and I acknowledge that there remains significant uncertainty beyond next year, with the planned Fair Funding Review casting a shadow over our financial plans from 2023/24 onwards. That said, as I mentioned earlier, the budget is balanced for next year, with no increase in our core council tax and no reliance on reserves to balance our budget in 2022/23, a position many other councils will no doubt be envious of. Not raising our core council tax next year will mean that we will lose access to circa £4.5 million of resources from our base budget capacity going forward. However, it is simply the right thing to do at this time. In terms of reserves, the cabinet has taken the opportunity to undertake a comprehensive review of all the EMR reserves and other reserves, and the report sets out the outcome of that review at sections 140 to 147, alongside details of the council's reserves policy.
One minute left, member.
We have been able to reprioritise and redirect a number of these reserves to meet ours and the community's priorities, invest in these funds in meeting and bolstering the Budget Support Service balance. Applying an adult social care precept increase next year is not a decision we should take lightly, particularly... lightly, particularly in light of the current squeeze on living standards, but in exercising our fiduciary responsibilities for the management of the council's budget, it is a decision borne out of the financial necessity to help fund the significant budget pressures in social care, and ensure we continue to support vulnerable people and the market in Durham. Not increasing council tax at all is not a sustainable or prudent strategy to adopt, and we must carefully manage the council's financial resources. If we didn't increase council-
Time to wrap up, please.
All right, thank you. Those on low incomes are still protected through our council tax reduction scheme, and some of my colleagues will go on to that later. We still have the discretionary housing payments grants, and I shall just go on. Sorry, I'm having to talk slow because I still haven't got my cough back from Covid. The report will also include various dedicated schools grant, and I shall just conclude, Chair, by moving the recommendations-
Thank you, Member. That will be sufficient, thank you. Can I have a second to the reports, please?
I second the report and recommendations under Items nine and ten combined, Chair, but reserve the right to speak until the end of the debate. councillor Richard Bell, thank you.
Okay. Before we move on to the debate, can I invite councillor Craig Martin to speak as the Chair of Overview and Scrutiny, please?
Thank you, Chair. Craig Martin, councillor for North Lodge in Chesley Street. As Chair of the Corporate Overview and Scrutiny Management Board, I have welcomed the opportunity to scrutinise Cabinet's budget proposals for the MTFP twenty-two, twenty-three to twenty-five, twenty-six, along with the revenue and capital budget for the same period. It is a priority for the Corporate Overview and Scrutiny Management Board to scrutinise the MTFP and budget. I am pleased we have been able to do that diligently and constructively. The Board received four Cabinet reports on the development of the MTFP and budget, and have fed back our views to Cabinet on each occasion. At our last meeting on the tenth of February, we had a one-item agenda to enable a detailed scrutiny of Cabinet's final proposals. The Board had a robust challenge and debate over the plans, and I'd like to thank everyone that took part, contributed, was involved in the discussion, and added to the debate, along with the Head of Financial and Commercial Services, for the comprehensive way he responded to all our questions. A main concern raised during our scrutiny is the uncertainty the council is facing, the uncertainty in the light of receiving a one-year local government settlement, the uncertainty over the potential impact of the Fair Funding Review, and the uncertainty caused by increasing budget pressures. Concerns were also raised in how local authorities have been delivered this funding, and the disparity between different local authorities based on need in different locations as well. All of the points raised by the Board are set out in paragraphs ninety-two and ninety-three of the report, pages sixty-six to sixty-eight. I look forward to the Board having even more involvement in the budget consultation process in the future years. Chair, on a personal note, I welcome how this budget seeks to deal with many of the things that have been raised in scrutiny previously: funding to deal with unclassified road maintenance backlog, funding for more trees and managing them, funding plans to deal with the climate emergency.
One minute, Member.
Personally, I will be voting for the budget, and I look forward to listening to the debate. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Member. Before we move into the debate, and I invite members to speak on the proposals, does any member have any questions? I'm not looking for a speech at the moment, just questions on the report. Councillor Crute, do you have a question? Councillor Sirtes, do you have a question? Nobody's red-chested asked. We'll now move on to speeches. Councillor Crute.
Thank you, Chair. I think it's fair to say that we live in exceptional times, a once-in-a-generation period of financial hardship, and we've got to bear that in mind, otherwise what I have to say today could be misunderstood or even misrepresented. What I want to say this morning must also be seen against a backdrop of a unique and ongoing cost of living crisis, a crisis that we know is having a severely damaging impact on household income and living standards across County Durham and beyond. And we know this because as a council, we supported a Labour motion last month calling on Boris Johnson's government to take immediate measures to mitigate its impact. The headline to the budget proposals before us this morning is that despite claims on their social media pages that they are holding council tax to a zero percent increase, the Coalition in County Hall is actually raising its council tax demand as a whole by a full three percent at a time of severe financial crisis, and while at the same time the government is imposing an increase in taxes nationally too, something they promised at the last election in twenty nineteen that they would never do. Notably, Chairman, the council's proposed council tax hike this year is higher than last year's under the previous Labour administration. That's another misleading claim corrected. Curiously, both the Coalition and the government are proposing to increase the tax burden to pay for a social care crisis that we were told just a few months ago by the Deputy Leader of the Council didn't exist in County Durham. Something doesn't quite stack up, does it, when the Coalition here, in lockstep with Boris Johnson's government, is proposing a double-taxour residents to pay for a social care crisis that they've told everyone doesn't exist? Clearly, that statement by the Leader of the Durham Tories is both contradictory and inconsistent with the facts, however it falls to individual members of the Coalition to explain that confusion to the residents of County Durham. For our part, we find it completely unacceptable that at a time when households are struggling more than ever before to make ends meet, they're now being held back even further by members of the County Council Coalition that supported our motion just a few weeks ago to give the residents of County Durham a helping hand in a time of crisis. To be perfectly clear, Chairman, we acknowledge that in normal times, and I stress 'normal times', council tax rises are almost inevitable. That's because of the way central government is essentially defunding local council services. As a reminder, back in two thousand and ten, when the Tories and the Lib Dems first got together in Coalition, they unleashed austerity on our communities and public services, and since then, local authority budgets have seen savage cuts year after year, with government effectively ordering councils to make up the funding shortfall locally by raising council tax. But, Chairman, these are not normal times, and under these specific circumstances, and in these almost unprecedented times of hardship, the Coalition needs to react accordingly when setting its council tax levels, that's if it truly wants to help alleviate the pressure on hard-pressed family budgets. Our residents in County Durham are already struggling from the effects of twelve years of Tory government imposed austerity, and in the motion agreed at full council last month, we urged the government to take whichever measures were necessary to alleviate the additional financial burden of a potential financial catastrophe had now aware. In that motion, we were reminded that the value of wages in real terms is falling, household disposable income in County Durham is lagging way behind the England average, central government-imposed taxes are set to increase from this April, universal credit benefit payments are being slashed by twenty pounds a week, energy prices are set to soar this coming spring, and inflation is rampant at an almost thirty-year high. And in consequence, Chairman, the Resolution Foundation estimated that the average household will lose around one thousand two hundred pounds a year, and now we see in the budget papers in front of us this morning that the Coalition in control of Durham County Council proposes to increase council tax by an additional three percent. The prevailing circumstances outlined above in very troubling times for our residents mean that this year's budget and council tax-setting process is exceptional in terms of how the Coalition in control of the council can step in and help our residents where central government has shamefully failed to do so. In other words, what the council would do in setting a budget in normal times is no longer relevant this year. These are exceptional times, and with that in mind, if the Coalition genuinely wants to alleviate the pressure on household finances, they need to adopt an exceptional approach to setting council tax levels for this coming year. For the reasons I've set out, we can't support this budget in its current form, and we urge like-minded members this morning to support us in rejecting the Coalition's proposal to increase council tax by three percent. Our residents deserve better, so we call on all genuinely independent members to join us in urging the Coalition to set a balanced budget that serves primarily to alleviate the huge and increasing financial pressure on hard-pressed families in County Durham. Calls on Boris Johnson's government to help our residents have largely fallen on deaf ears. In fact, despite our plea to impose a windfall tax on profit-rich North Sea oil and gas companies, they have chosen instead to force ordinary working families to stump up more tax from April. So the Coalition in control at the County Council must do everything in its powers now to show that in contrast to the government, it's actually listening, and then demonstrate that they're prepared to step in and help. Chairman, in the introduction to this statement, I said that we live in exceptional times, where the cost of living crisis is putting almost unbearable pressure on households across County Durham, and as I've said, exceptional times require exceptional measures. So we are asking the Coalition to recognise the financial hardship our residents are in, scrap their council tax proposals for this year, and come back with a better offer. Chairman, this is the first time that new members will have had a direct input into setting the council tax for County Durham, and many of those new members were elected less than a year ago, many on a promise to reduce council tax, and in some cases even offer a council tax rebate. Well, now's your time. You've got the option this morning of either falling in behind the Coalition and raising council tax by three percent, that's an increase on last year, or you can join us in urging the Coalition to come back to the council with a balanced budget that both protects frontline services and also protects households at a time of crisis by setting council tax at a justified and affordable level, a budget in an affordable council tax level that gives the residents of County Durham a helping hand when they need it most. It's time to choose which side you're on, and we urge you to show County Durham's residents and hard-pressed families this morning that you're on their side by taking a stand against tax rises at a time of exceptional financial hardship. What happens next, Members, is in your hands.
Councillor Sirtes.
Councillor Angela Sirtes, Shadow Cabinet for Communities and Social Inclusion. Chair, across County Durham, our residents are being plunged further and further into poverty, vulnerability, are just simply worrying times. This government has had the foot on the throat of County Durham for twelve years, slashing the council's budget with its horrendous austerity purge. Austerity combined with Brexit and the Covid pandemic are having huge impact on residents, and the cost of living crisis is creating the perfect storm for families living in our county. And last month, when I was told that I should forget about austerity, I'll never forget about austerity because all of our residents have gone through it the last twelve years. And what have we got? We've got our Tory-led Coalition presenting this budget. Families are being pushed to their financial limits by government, aided by the Tory-led Coalition running in County Durham, who have failed to support and change most of the Labour-led motions directed at support for people and standing up for County Durham. And what are County Durham's Conservatives, who we have been propped up by the Lib Dems and so-called independents, going to do about more than a quarter of the county's children living in poverty? Almost thirty percent of youngsters relying on free school meals for hot food, or the fact that the disposable income of families has barely risen naught point one percent since December twenty nineteen? It presents them with a budget that does nothing to support the unique and uncertain times ahead of them. It sells them a naught percent council tax rise, when in fact it is a higher rise than last year, and in essence, a double taxation for adult social care. When that bill drops on people's doorsteps or arrives in email boxes, people in County Durham will see a three percent council tax rise. They won't go, 'Oh lovely, naught percent core council tax'. The cost of living crisis is upon our county now, and in April, families will be hit with more costs to living, NI contributions, fuel costs rising, no real-time wage increases, inflation standing at an all-time high. Poverty blights people's lives in many ways. It denies opportunity, it affects health and mental health, it isolates people from society, too many people in our county-
One minute, Member.
-and wider minorities suffer from poverty. Our child poverty is currently standing at twenty-five point eight percent, and it's shameful that children are going hungry and sleeping in clothes because of the brutal austerity programme and welfare reforms that brought communities to their knees even before the pandemic hit. We are a council who stands at the forty-eighth most deprived in the country with sixteen neighbourhoods classed as left behind in a recent report. We are a council who for the last twelve years have done everything possible to limit the impact of austerity, for the last two years have supported people through the pandemic, and now the cost of living crisis is upon us. This Coalition will stand to support the motion from Labour to do everything possible to mitigate the effects, but have done nothing in the budget. The cost of living crisis will affect all families in County Durham, sending our communities further into destitution and put more pressures on support services. I cannot support the budget in its current form, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Councillor Lucy Hobbles, Trimpton and Thornley Division. I believe this proposed budget puts a big sticky plaster on social care, and although councillor Bell stated in previous meetings that there was no such thing as social care crisis in County Durham, this report this morning clearly states there is, and the crisis is only going to get worse. The cost of social care is financially crippling for our residents, and many find it hard because of the pandemic. Increasing council tax to pay for social care is a double whammy for our hard-pressed residents. Many will feel they are shelling out twice for this service now, and the three percent levy is being proposed this morning when many of our families are already struggling financially. We all know that social care should be funded properly, and not from the local pocket but from central government, to provide new funding to meet the immediate demands and pressures that social care faces, including financial impact that the Covid has had on these services. We need a cast-iron commitment from government to provide a steady stream of investment which will result in a long-term plan, but instead this budget places fear on residents that the funding could be diverted elsewhere because it's not ring-fenced. I feel this morning's proposal budget will put great pressure on our residents, whom many will find the three percent on council tax a double burden, and will struggle to find that extra money in their pockets, as they are already struggling going through this difficult time. Chairman, I cannot support this this morning.
Thank you. Councillor Denali.
Thank you, Chair. Councillor Deaneley, Blackhall's Division. How can we hike up the council tax when families across County Durham simply can't afford it? I have spoken to many families across the county who have expressed that they are worried about the cost of living, worried about the hike in fuel costs and inflation. Many of these families have to work two or three jobs to ensure that they can pay their bills and put food on the table. The rate at which people are accessing food banks has increased significantly, and not just families who receive benefits, but families who are working families, and yet here we are with a proposal to increase council tax.
Is it a bit loud? Yes, I was just going to say, councillor, just-
We need to look after the families in our county and give them a tax freeze when they most need it.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Gunn.
Thank you, Chair. Councillor Alwyn Gunn, representing Wellington-Hunwick Division and Shadow Cabinet Member for Children and Young People. Chair, why are we in the Labour Group labouring this three percent- Chair, why are we in the Labour group labouring this three per cent council tax rise? Well, I'll tell you why. A three per cent increase in council tax, by the time it filters down to pennies in the purse, can mean the difference to a child having breakfast before school or going to school hungry. It can mean the difference between the confidence of parents not having to make those choices and the anxiety they feel when they have no choices and they cry themselves to sleep. Poverty affects every area of children's lives, from their waking up hungry to their going to bed on an empty stomach. We all want children to learn and to thrive, and poverty just prevents that happening. You may recall that Sir Kevin Collins' Education Recovery Commissioner recommended the government spend £15 million on education recovery. The government gave 1.4 billion. Money in the home and spending in schools are at the heart of levelling up, but this government and this budget are not levelling up for County Durham children. Now, it's well researched that low income is a strong predictor of educational performance, and poverty has a lasting and damaging impact on the future life chances of children. We've done a great deal to support children and families on many levels. It was Labour that took that forward, and with the support of many councillors in this room. And we should always be doing the best we can.
One minute, member.
A three per cent council tax rise is not the best we can do at this time, when the cost of living crisis is placing families in crisis. So a year into the present administration is a good time, I think, for all of us to reflect on who we are, on what we agree, and what we are supporting. The chickens are coming home to roost. There are no easy cuts in council services, but cutting council tax to 0%, the real 0%, not the pretend one, is the right thing to do in these exceptional circumstances. So I call on all of my non-Labour colleagues to reflect on what the coalition is doing and think, when they retire, do they want to be associated with this council's policies?
Thank you, member.
Thank you, Chair.
Commissioner Curradine: Counselor Peter Atkinson.
Counselor Peter Atkinson, Furry Hill and Kirkmountain Ward. Members, I've spent the last four weeks on the doorstep, speaking, listening to the people of my ward, Furry Hill and Kirkmountain, listening to their concerns, and by far the biggest concern is the oncoming crisis in the cost of living. My ward is by no means affluent. In fact, in Furry Hill, our local authority, I would say we have nearly one of the highest claimants of universal credit, no fault of the residents. The rate of claiming any benefit is more than 25% higher than the national average in Furry Hill, suggesting that many people in my ward may be underemployed or simply just on a low wage. It's no wonder that people are absolutely terrified at the thought of the hike in prices that's coming along. So, members, could I appeal to everybody? Show compassion, come up with something that's affordable for the residents of Furry Hill and for the residents of County Durham. Thank you.
Commissioner Curradine: Counselor Charlton-Lenney, please.
Rochelle Charlton-Lenney, Dean's Side Division. I would just like to draw members' attention to some of the recent election campaign material that the coalition have been putting out, some broken tax promises that I'm just going to go through. So first, under the microscope, is the Council Conservative leaflet. This leaflet was handed out during the May 2021 elections, and I'm now going to read directly from the leaflet. Labour is increasing council tax again this year, blaming everyone but themselves in giving us amongst the highest bills in county in return for potholed, overpaid council bosses, bureaucracy, waste, and our issues ignored. Now, considering the joint administration coordinating a narrative around zero council tax rise, when really they're putting it up by three per cent, which is also actual double taxation, do you really think it's a good time to be adding another, and I quote, 'overpaid council boss', to the payroll? Next up, we have this leaflet from Counselor Phil Heviside, again from the May 2021 elections, and Counselor Heviside's leaflet reads, 'Did you know that the independent councillors in County Hall submitted an amendment in a bid to prevent the Labour group's increase in council tax bills this year?'" Well, Counselor Heviside, I really hope that your independent voice isn't lost today when the vote on the rise in council tax bill comes. And finally, I want to share with you the County Durham Conservative Collective MP's leaflet for Bishop Ogland, North West Durham and Sedgfield, and I'll read directly from the leaflet. 'Labour are desperate to see their opponents flintered, as they have so successfully done for 20 years locally, the divide-and-conquer approach. They want to see lots of little parties, independents and Lib Dems, who can all be managed, not a strong united voice for the Conservatives.' Now, it seems to me that the Conservatives have pre-planned all of the little voices into something they can manage to give a strong voice for the Conservatives and the joint administration.
One minute, member.
'I would urge all members to vote against the overall tax rise. The cost of living is too high already. Stop propping up the administration, use your independent voices instead of backing a tax hike for the communities who elected you months ago. Finally, I would like all members of the joint administration to understand that according to these leaflets, you've all been manipulated from the very beginning.' Thank you.
Commissioner Curradine: Counselor Shield.
Counselor Alan Shield, Member of the Leadgate and Bedlenty Division and portfolio holder for Equality and Inclusion. Lot has been made by the opposition regarding the cost of living rises and that we have the ability to recognise the financial hardship. I'd just like to point people in the direction of the report of pages or paragraphs 121 to 127, and I'm going to paraphrase some of the things that this coalition have been doing. So we are one of the few councils that actually overspend our DWP grant allocation on discretionary housing. We support using council tax reduction schemes and hardship support schemes more than 80% of our working tax claimants, with some in the region of £64.5 million paid out in this current year. Regarding free school meals and fun with activity, this council and this coalition provided funds in excess of any other local authority during the Christmas and October holidays. No other local authority paid more than what we did. The School Benevolent Fund, which we subscribe to, provides school uniforms to the cost of £35 per coat and £35 per shoe, which was originally administered by Thornhill School. It's now to be administered by this coalition, and it's to the factor of 15 times greater than it was in Thornhill School. The Bread and Butter Scheme, which was initiated by the Labour Group, and it's a good scheme, we have enhanced that.
On previous lists, and I'm really, really sorry, but a lot of the initiatives that this person, Counselor Shield, with respect, are all implemented by Labour.
Chair, points of order relate to breaches of either the council procedure rules or the legislation?
Commissioner Curradine: Counselor Shield.
Thank you, Chair, and if you could remind them, no pointing and no shouting. Thank you. Chair, would you exercise your discretion, please?
Member, member, thank you. Right, Counselor Shield.
I'm bringing to the point of this audience that we do recognise the financial hardship within this county and some of the things that we are doing, but I'd also like to point out some of the other things as well. I think the members of this opposition have some short memories and also have some issues with regard to accuracy and validity of numbers. The leader of the opposition has previously stressed that the lost employment to this organisation of 30,000 jobs, this is a hypothetical figure. If we were ever to achieve £12 billion on the economy, that was never, ever achieved by the previous administration. The billboard outside of County Hall, which showed an indiscretion of over 6,000 jobs being promoted by this enterprise park, that figure was consistently wrong. The true loss of employment is probably no more than 3,000 jobs to Durham County Council, not the 6,000 which were intimated by the leader of the opposition in a recent overview and scrutiny meeting. And finally, the new headquarters, there's a potential value of £100 million being raised by the leader of the opposition. Not sure where that gets us to, it's a hypothetical figure, but rest assured, it will be probably used by a political pawn. Some words have been used about the independent groups. I need to remind the opposition that a lot of these independent members were in actual fact Labour members, card-carrying Labour members, who became so disenfranchised and disillusioned that they wanted to have their voices heard, and on that basis, they decided to stand as independents. The opposition have not submitted any amendments to this joint administration budget. Your view is that we are a coalition of chaos, and you consistently use that word, chaos and chaotic. You complain, you criticise, you chastise, you confront, and you condemn. All C-words. Well, let me give you some new C-words in support of this budget. This budget is comprehensive in content, it's coherent in clarity, it's challenging in its range, it's compelling in its vision. And finally, Chair, I commend this budget to all members of this council. Thank you.
Before we move on, can I remind members to respect one another when speaking? Ask that people, stop talking whilst other people are speaking. Counselor Hannig, please.
Chair, there have been a series of statements made in recent weeks that council tax has never previously been frozen since the Durham Unitary Council came into being. Chair, these claims are simply untrue. To quote a BBC article from February 2013, Durham County councillors have agreed to freeze council tax for the fourth consecutive year. Now, I realise that some Conservatives don't like the BBC very much and wouldn't believe its claims, so I thought I'd better check some council tax bills. So here I find a bill from 2011, Durham County Council, change per cent 0.0. 2012, Durham County Council, change 0.0. 2013, Durham County Council, change 0.0. So it seems, Chair, that not only has council tax been frozen before, it happened for several years running, and it happened under a Labour council. Chair, from this April, it has been estimated that the tax burden in this country will be at its highest for 70 years, 70 years. So it's time for both the government and this council to address an unprecedented cost of living crisis, to do all it can to support people across our county and scrap their planned tax increases. Thank you.
Commissioner Curradine: Counselor Joplin.
Counselor Patricia Joplin from the Crook Ward. I've listened to everything everyone's got to say here this morning, and I just wonder whether we're all living in the same universe. We've had Covid, which has cost billions, 400, I understand. We now have on our doorstep and fastly coming on Russia that is going to cause economic havoc. We have had, since 2010, when we went unitary, or 29, when the elections were, a Labour administration up until last May. And I would like to know why they didn't do something about poverty. I understand we have poverty, we are all doing our best to deal with poverty, but whilst they were in administration, yes, they may not have put the council tax up for three years on the trot, and what they did instead was cut core services, which is now one of the things that we're trying to put right. Also, they seem to at that point have amassed hundreds of millions of reserves over that period while the residents out there are suffering. So to me, that doesn't equate, and I think we need to come back to the real world, the real world as we've got it today, with the huge debt because of Covid and Covid still there, the fact that there isn't a money tree, there isn't a money tree, borrowing is going to get more difficult for any government, and perhaps they could make, or their leader in Parliament could make a suggestion of exactly what he would do to fix all these problems, because to me, it seems that...
One minute, member.
...the party over there seem to spend more time trawling the internet so they can do soundbites at these sort of meetings than looking for any sort of answer to these problems.
Commissioner Curradine: Counselor Henderson.
As portfolio holder for Children and Young People's Services, I welcome the additional budget provision built into next year's budget for looked-after children and for homes-to-school transport, which as present is very, very expensive. These areas have received significant budget uplifts in recent years, but which continue to come under immense pressure and demand and complexity for a need of increase. I welcome the £8.4 million of additional government funding for our schools and £7.7 million of additional funding for our special educational needs and disability services. I am delighted that this budget includes some significant capital investment in our schools too, with an additional £31 million of new investment included. schools too, with an additional £31 million of new investment included in these budget proposals, including investment in a new primary school at Spennymo, on the rebuild of Belmont and on schools, capitalised maintenance and basic needs, together with investment in new children's homes. These are significant investments and demonstrate the scale of ambition we have. Chair, with that, I am happy to support the recommendations set out in this report, including the local school formula that is referenced in this report. Thank you Chair.
Councillor Marshall.
Chair, thank you and I'd just like to start by saying, it is my opinion, we shouldn't be holding up a list of support for families living in poverty in County Durham as if it's some sort of prize or some sort of great achievement. We should be focusing on the cause of poverty and trying to alleviate it and not exacerbate it and that is the reason why myself and various members of my group are standing here this morning opposing this. And several members here have outlined the position we find ourselves in. It was well debated at the last council meeting, spiral inflation, increased energy costs, a government that's siding with the corporations and not the people of this country. It's a travesty and we can play our small part in trying to support our communities. It's disappointing that after 100 years of a Labour controlled council, we're here today with the worst cost of living crisis in over 30 years, inflation spiralling and yet what do we have? We have a coalition here in Durham, Ablin and Abeton, the Tory masters in Downing Street. You're both the same, you're putting the pressure on the hardworking people in County Durham. It's been the same since 2010. People can't afford it, it's about time, you came clean with the electorate, you explained that actually this is a 3% tax hike, the public will see through it in exactly the same way as I saw through Boris and his lies, they'll see through when the council tax bills hit the doormat in a few weeks' time. We should be voting against this, you need to go away and think again, you need to come back quickly with an alternative which doesn't put the burden on hardworking people in County Durham, support our communities when they need it most and think again about these proposals that are in front of us this morning Chair. Thank you.
Councillor Wilkes.
Thank you Chair. I'm happy to support much needed investment in our frontline services as part of this budget and on tackling climate change and I'll be brief. Chair, under the previous administration, reserves went up, council tax went up and services were cut. This is the first non-Labour budget for 100 years with a 0% core council tax rise and funding to make sure all our care workers are paid a decent wage. Chair, despite the fact we are investing for the first time in a decade in frontline services to help residents, Labour are voting against this budget without a single alternative suggestion. Councillor Crute appears to think that inflation's soaring towards perhaps 9%, that the council shouldn't provide the funding to ensure our vulnerable residents have well-paid carers, indeed have carers at all. I find that astonishing and what is equally staggering is that councillor Crute and his Labour colleagues want to create a black hole in the council's budget of over 7.2 million pounds with not a single suggestion as to how to pay for it. That's unreal, not a single suggestion. Chair, I fully support this first non-Labour budget for a century, a budget put together by the whole joint administration for the whole of County Durham and a budget which is fully costed. In 14 years of budget meetings, there have been alternative proposals from opposition councillors, in every single case, those proposals were fully costed and approved by our section 151 officer. Chair, I've always felt in politics, whether national or local, we need a strong opposition. Today, we clearly do not have this as nothing has been offered by Labour than a black hole. Councillor Marshall says the public will see through this budget. One thing is certain, they will see through a Labour opposition that can't make a single solitary budget suggestion. Thank you Chair.
Councillor Rawlinson.
Thank you Chair. James Rawlinson, Barnacastle East, portfolio holder for resources, investments and assets. I very much welcome the investments presented in this budget, in allotments after years of neglect by the previous administration, ignoring the three years of work by the environment scrutiny who brought a report to Cabinet, who completely ignored it and put it in the drawer that was too hard to do. I also welcome the near £2 million investment in our county gems, our parks, Hardwick, Riverside and Pow Hill, our countryside estate, local nature reserves and wildlife sites. Our residents should be duly proud of these sites and the improvements to them will encourage them to go out and enjoy them more. I would also like to note the match funding for our ambitious levelling up bids are included in the budget and provision to enable us to develop and submit bids to secure funding for the remaining five parliamentary areas where we fully anticipate in securing an additional 100 million from government funds to our county. Chair, this afternoon, the leader and I are visiting Horden. Horden stands as a testament to the failure of the previous administration. To see the work done by our CAT team, another service which has been neglected by Labour, where throughout the Consumer Protection Service, 60% of the staff will retire within the next five to six years. This is now being addressed in this budget and a succession plan is being put in place. Chair, I believe the actions are better, I believe actions are better than words, the actions in this budget and on the ground show that the joint administration are committed to improve the lives and opportunities of our residents in this county. I commend the budget to members. Thank you Chair.
Councillor Howie.
Thank you Chair, councillor Howie from the Woodhouse Close Division. The joint administration is looking more than ever to support those in poverty. The joint administration are working harder than ever to support the communities. Looking on the website now, it's showing there, how you get your money off the council tax bill, there's hardship schemes there to help people who can't afford it. If you are really struggling for money and you're on benefits, the council is still continuing to help those that are in poverty to pay for the council tax bill. There are people on those breadlines that we know are really struggling and that's why there's the hardship grant in place that you've all had for a very long time to help those people and we are continuing that on. Regarding the 0% rise, when you look on last year's website for what went up, it says on there, it's going up by 1.99%. You didn't add on there, on that website, the 1% social care you were putting on, even though it states on there 1.99, you've got an extra 1% on last year's bill as well. So you didn't state that on there either. So we are putting the 0% down for our core rate to keep it down, but we are recruiting people, we are helping those in poverty with pest control at last, that can't afford the pest control, we're bringing that in, we're bringing more officers in to keep on top of all that. So more than ever, we are helping those in poverty. I do support this.
Councillor Sexton.
Thank you Chair. Yeah, it's extraordinary that we're being ridiculed for this. Social care needs funding, I think we can all agree on that, councillor Hovell's has just stated that. Yet councillor Crute said we should be doing a 0%. This is where we've conflated the issues, I'm afraid. As a portfolio holder for adult and health services, annoying that we fast-tracked a 10% increase in November, where I hasten to add, no Labour members attended Cabinet that day, I don't believe. We fast-tracked that to make sure we could head off any issues and winter pressure. That's forward thinking and I commend the senior management team and all the officers involved in delivering that, to give a cost per hour increase to our care workers, to avoid people leaving the industry and trying to retain them and indeed attract more. We're not in a crisis, but we're borderline right across the country. And I asked the joint administration if they would look at allowing us to go the full social care levy so that we don't have people sitting in their homes waiting for carers to come in, families without the support they need, who have to take time off work to look after loved ones. We've avoided that because we've planned ahead. The 3% allows us to plan ahead in the next year and who knows with the fair funding review, when we get that, we may be in better shape the year after, we don't know, but what we need to know now is how much money we have in social care. So the joint administration graciously put that forward, it was agreed and not only that, they understood the financial challenges of everyone and agreed a core council tax freeze. That is the actual facts and how many times you try and dress it up differently, that is what it is.
One minute, member.
I had a speech here written today, but I've gone off-piste, so to speak. But I would just say, I'm a genuine independent councillor, an independent councillor and we as independent make up most of the joint administration. Nobody tells us how to vote, we sit down and we debate and we come to an agreement, a consensus, unlike the opposition over there who are whipped into voting. Look at the history of the voting and you'll see, only on one or two occasions by four par have others done it.
Quiet members.
We had a week here, a month here, where we had a casting vote by our chair. Only last month, we had some vote with Ollwyn Gunn's amendment, councillor Gunn's amendment. That is true democracy in the making.
Thank you, thank you councillor.
Thank you Chair, I support this budget.
Councillor Walton.
Thank you Chair, I'm Michelle Walton and I represent the Dulles Lane Division. I just wanted to say, our colleagues at the other side of the room keep referring to us new councillors who were brought in just in May of last year and I am one of them. As a new councillor, I'm very happy to let our residents know that this joint administration has worked very hard to enable this council to have a 0% core rise. We're still offering value for money, we're still maintaining services, we're bringing in new services, as my colleague mentioned about the infestation, we are addressing issues that our residents asked us to, very pleased that we are supporting schools, as councillor Henderson has already raised. The other side of the room refer a lot to hardworking people, I'm a hardworking person, as I know a lot of us are in here and I think this is a fantastic budget, supports everything, addresses some difficult issues. The other side are saying, don't support it, but they're offering us nothing in return. Now, I appreciate I'm a new councillor, but I kind of think that if you say, don't do this, there should be an alternative. The fact that they can't give an alternative means that I think they know there isn't a better one. They know that this joint administration, all groups together, have worked, discussed, listened to residents, took on board people's opinions, made some quite difficult choices, but ultimately have saved all of the people in County Durham very well. I'm very proud to say I will be supporting this budget and I would encourage all members in this room to do the same. Thank you.
Councillor Quinn.
Councillor Joe Quinn for the Ferryill and Kirkmurton Ward. I too am often out in my community, however, one of the main issues I come across is antisocial behaviour. I hope the increase of 11.34% over the last two years by the Labour Police Crime Commissioner will improve this issue. I would also like to remind members that we're one of very few councils that still give 100% council tax reduction to those who need it most. I support this budget Chair. Thank you.
Councillor Shuttleworth.
Thanks Chairman, as portfolio holder for rural communities highways and community safety, I just want to speak in support of the budget proposal in the report, particularly the significant additional investment in highways, which I've banged on about for some years now, majority of which will help support investment in our rural communities. Last month, I reviewed a report at Cabinet which gave an updated position in terms of our transport asset management plan. In that report, it was identified that whilst we had a maintenance backlog of just over 171 million, the condition of our A, B and C principal roads which carry the highest volume of traffic was above national standards. The only area where we lagged behind national averages was on the unclassified roads and I'm delighted these budget proposals seek to address that after many years of neglect and I'm sure everybody in the room will benefit from this somewhere along the line, including Paul Till who's smiling there, thank you. The budget provides for £15 million of additional DCC funded capital investment over and above the £15 million of additional local transport plan grant, which we expect to receive and invest in our highways. I also welcome the mainstream funding of the drainage inspections that have been funded on a non-recurring basis for a number of years now, again, which I think Paul Till has been at me about a couple of times, Paul. This is not a sustainable position and one which we have thankfully now addressed in the base budget. Like my colleagues, I fully appreciate that decisions on council tax increases aren't easy. We must carefully weigh the need to maintain service delivery and be prudent with our finances against the financial impacts any increase will have on households. By not increasing the core council tax allied with extending the council tax support scheme and the top-up scheme next year, I believe we've struck the right balance. And can I just remember my colleagues on the left here, that back in 1999, when Tony Blair was leader of the Labour group, you put the council tax at 15.9% and when the press went looking for you, none of you could be found. They found me, but they didn't find you.
Councillor Coates.
Thank you councillor Bev Coles, Ashen Winting, Gilbert Ward. Chair firstly, I would like to thank everybody who's been involved in setting this budget. Whilst acknowledging we've got many challenges facing us in the future, I fully support this budget. This budget includes investment in many frontline services such as allotments, street cleaning, community protection and pest control, all of which are areas which residents raise concerns to me on a very regular basis. It also provides additional capital funding of over £22 million to improve our highways, 2.3 million in urban footways and public rights of way and everyone here knows the importance that these areas have been to us all over the last couple of years. Not only that Chair, but it invests in our levelling up bids and millions going into Belmont Primary School and Community Arts College. It also makes steps to invest in our climate emergency response plan with £5 million going towards decarbonising some of our buildings. And lastly, and most importantly, my view Chair, it does consider the needs of the residents. Life over the past two years has been extremely challenging and it currently remains that way, with rising living costs impacting us on us all. That is why for me, the 2022/23 revenue budget supports residents by proposing a core 0% council tax increase and I would urge colleagues to support this. Thank you Chair.
Councillor Tinsley.
Thank you Chair, Fraser Tinsley, willing to the Homewick Division. These are exceptional times, fellow members, these are very exceptional times. We know this when we knock on the doors... We know this when we knock on the doors, when we speak to residents, people are worried, people are scared. And this is an opportunity for us in County Durham to do a little bit, to help people, and help alleviate that fear. Now, reserves is something that's come up a lot over the years that I've been on this council. What do we do about reserves? We should spend reserves, is what we always hear, from what was the opposition. And in fact, the Labour Group spent over £100 million in reserves, helping to reject people in County Durham from the worst excesses of austerity that were really pernicious and attacking people in this county. But when I look at the figures of this budget here now, what I look at is the increase in council tax amounts to just over £7 million. That 3% increase in council tax is just over £7 million. But then I look at the Budget Support Reserve, and I see in the Budget Support Reserve, there is £15.3 million, or there will be, on the 31st of March of this year. So in these exceptional times, when people are struggling so much in this county, this is the point that we should step forward, go extra, go further, and spend less than half of what is left in the Budget Support Reserve. The final point I would like to make, and this is particularly for new members, is that today, we do not have to make the budget. There is the option for us to go away, sit down collectively as a council, and decide how best we can protect people, and make that increase in the budget in a council tax less at 0%. And what I would propose is that we do that. And how you would do that is you would vote against it, we go away, we come back, and maybe we could look at that budget.
One minute, Member.
And maybe we could look at that Budget Support Reserve, less than half of it, to protect people in County Durham. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, members, there's no one else. Register to speak. Can I bring councillor Bell in to speak before councillor Hopgood has the right of reply? Councillor Bell.
Thank you, Chair. Councillor Richard Bell, portfolio holder for Finance. Can I thank the officers for a very comprehensive and thorough report, and to all members who through scrutiny have contributed to it. The report is the culmination of months of work and sets out proposals which I commend to this council, and that I believe will be the envy of many of the councils. The budget proposals have largely been made possible through a better-than-expected increase in funding being made available to us by government, £19.8 million, paragraph 2A, next year, and also through the prudent management of our finances. The budget includes significant investment in frontline services and in our ambitious capital programmes, and that has redeployed surplus reserves to fund one-off investments. We have avoided increasing council tax to the maximum 5% permissible, and are proposing a nil increase in the core council tax next year, and a 3% increase in the adult social care precept. This budget is sustainable and doesn't rely on using reserves to balance the books, all this despite the £45 million of unavoidable inflationary and demand-based budget pressures we have had to accommodate. That, Chair, represents prudent financial management of the public finances, which will always be the bedrock of our approach. The capital programme includes £113 million of new investments, including further significant investment in our leisure centres, in schools, including new builds, including here at Spenimua, in the levelling up agenda, and in our highways infrastructure, which will see record levels of investment. The investments in frontline services set out in the report will undoubtedly produce visible and noticeable improvements in service delivery. From rat control to roads, a better service will be provided. Our schools will also benefit from additional investment with significant increases in schools block, dedicated schools grant funding, and on special educational needs and disability funding factored into next year's budget. It is somewhat disappointing that the settlement is only for one year, and there clearly remains significant uncertainty beyond 2022/23, mainly because we don't yet know what the government's revised fair funding proposals will be, and how they will impact on the council. This uncertainty continues to make financial planning difficult, and depending on how things turn out with the 2023/24 settlement, there are significant challenges to come, which will require difficult choices to be made. Our low tax raising capacity is a problem. I have consistently raised this with government, most recently in our feedback on the local government finance settlement. The MTFP 12 forecasts appended to this report assume that we could lose around £9 million of the additional funding we will receive next year in 2023/24, and shows a savings requirement of around £30 million over the last three years of the MTFP 12 planning period. This will be particularly challenging, with half of the savings target falling into 2023/24. This is where the Budget Support Reserve will come in, councillor Tinsley. Work will start on developing options to address these challenges immediately after we have agreed this year's budget. This will involve early engagement with scrutiny, and I would encourage all members to feed ideas into the scrutiny process or directly, particularly on savings targets. As one would expect, the cost pressures in adult and children's social care, which are by far the largest budgets the council has, around 2% of our net expenditure, are enormous. The report clearly demonstrates that a 3% adult social care precept is justified and needed to ensure that we can fund these pressures next year. Councillor Crute raises the national health and social care levy and the issue of double taxation. As he knows well, and is stated at paragraph 19, the vast majority of this funding is earmarked to go to the NHS to tackle the Covid-related backlogs that have built up for the NHS. We will receive £1.9 million of this money in the next financial year. Decisions on council tax increases are matters that require careful consideration, but I believe that this budget strikes the right balance between council tax budget pressures and investments. We've avoided the temptation to increase council tax by the maximum 5% permissible, as the government expects us to do in its core spending power calculations. We know that people are feeling the squeeze on their incomes with prices, particularly fear of rising faster than incomes. Our local council tax reduction scheme, probably the most generous in the country, means that 21,000 pensioners pay nothing, as do 27,500 working-age claimants. Many more receive some help, and we are continuing top-up payments on this scheme until 2024/25, paragraph 122. I would refer members also to the December Cabinet report, which over four pages on poverty, covered the many welfare schemes operated.
One minute, Member.
By this council. As the Leader has mentioned, this report also includes updates on the pay policy, treasure and management strategy, prudential indicators and property investment strategy. These are important documents, and adopting these various policies and strategies is important in meeting our statutory requirements. I would remind all members that we have a legal duty and obligation to agree a budget and set our council tax by 11th of March. With that, Chair, I second the proposals and recommendations set out in this report, and I ask all members to support the proposals in items nine and 10. Thank you, Chair.
Can I now ask the Leader of the Council to close the debate with her right of reply, please?
To pick up on something that councillor Hennig said early on about 2011, 12 and 13, the council didn't choose not to increase council tax, it chose to accept a government grant to freeze council taxes, a distinct difference. We were given the money by government in order not to pass that on to the public. There's lots been said in here this morning, lots of words. We're in exceptional times. So what I'm really struggling here to understand from the opposition is where have you been for the last few months? Not one of you have been to scrutiny and mentioned the council tax rise at scrutiny. None of you have turned up at Cabinet to ask questions about the MTFP. What I see here today is a lack of ideas, a lack of ambition and a lack of amendments. I can't believe we have an opposition here today who, for the first time in 14 years, have failed to bring a single amendment for something that is so bad. And here's a hashtag for your social media, lacklustre Labour, because that's what you are. Please support this.
Thank you, members, for a very long debate. Can I now hand over to the Head of Legal and Democratic Services to proceed with the recorded vote on the motion relating to the medium-term financial plan 2022/23 to 2025/26 in revenue and capital budget 2022 to 2023? I'll pass over to Helen Mill.
Thank you, Chair. So as has just been outlined, we're voting on item nine first, the MTFP, and revenue and capital budget. To vote in favour of the recommendations, please press one on your handset, two to vote against, and three to abstain. And if you wait for the beep to confirm that voting's open. The vote's now open, so it's one in favour, two against, and three to abstain. If you accidentally press the wrong button, pressing the right button will correct your vote. Closing the vote.
Members, item nine, the MTFP revenue and capital budget, four is 64, against is 47, abstentions zero. Recommendations are approved. Members, a recorded vote will now take place to set the council tax in order to meet the county's financial years, April 1st, 2023, in line with the Audit Committee. Can I pass over to Helen again to take us through the vote?
Thank you, Chair. So it's the same drill. We're voting in respect of item 10, the council tax. It's one in favour, two against, three to abstain. And if you press the wrong button, pressing the right button will correct your vote. So one for, two against, three to abstain. The vote's open. Closing the vote. Closing the vote.
Members, item 10, council tax setting for 2022/23, four is 64, against is 47, and abstentions are zero. Recommendations are approved. Can I now move on to item 11, decision to opt in to the National Scheme for Audit Appointments managed by the Public Sector Audit Appointments, better known as the PSAA. Can I ask the Corporate Director of Resources to present the report, please?
Thank you, Chair. The existing contract with our external auditors, Mazars, comes to an end after the audit of the 2022/23 accounts, and we need to put in place arrangements to start the process to appoint our external auditors for the five-year period, 2023/24 to 2027/28. This report seeks council endorsement to the proposal that the council opts into the national appointments process through the Public Sector Audit Appointments, or PSAA for short, which in line with statutory requirements is a decision reserved for council. We are not obliged to opt into the national appointments process and can run our own procurement exercise locally or with other partners. The process we would need to follow, should we pursue that avenue, is set out in sections eight to 21 of the report. To opt into the national appointments process, we must register our interest by the 11th of March, and the benefits of participating in the national appointments process are set out at section 24 of the report. I would note that all other local authorities in our region have or are in the process of taking a decision to go down the PSAA route. The report sets out the challenges in the local audit market and the government response to try and boost capacity and capability. The process for the PSAA will run, is set out at sections 34 to 37 of the report. The Audit Committee have considered the options set out in this report at its meeting on the 29th of November, and they fully supported the proposal to go down the PSAA route for the reasons set out at section 24. The recommendations are set out of paragraph 10 of the report, which are to accept the PSAA invitation to participate in the national procurement process for the appointment of our external auditors. Thank you, Chair.
Can I have a mover for the report, please? Councillor Watson.
Alex Watson, councillor for Conserd North Division. Thank you, Chair, for this opportunity. Can I thank Paul for this report, which the Audit Committee considered on 29th of November, and unanimously supported the recommendations as set out, but which needs council endorsement, hence the report for us today. All other authorities in our region are taking the same approach to what is set out for us to consider today, and opting into the national procurement and appointments process via Public Sector Audit Appointments process, for the same reasons set out in the report. This limits the This limits the opportunities for a locally-led procurement exercise, and it would be seen to be inefficient for us to seek to run our own procurement exercise in any event. As Chair of the Audit Committee, I'm aware of the difficulties in recruiting auditors and the challenges in the market, which has resulted in many authorities not being able to get their accounts signed off in time, in line with statutory deadlines. Thankfully, we have not been in that position. And I do hope that the measures being taken nationally to improve both the quality, cost, and profitability of these important areas of activity will help address those market conditions going forward. With that, Chair, I am happy to move the report and recommendations as set out at paragraph ten. Thank you, Chair.
Can I have a second for that, please?
Thank you, Chair. Councillor Louise Fennick, Pete Lee-West. As Vice Chair of the Audit Committee, can I second the report and also add my thanks to Paul and his team for this report and for their work on the statement of accounts for 2021 and over many years. The relationship with the council's external auditors is an important one, and I know that Audit Committee members value their input and contributions to meetings of the Audit Committee, which they routinely attend. Access to the external audit team and their involvement in these meetings is an important part of our corporate and financial governance arrangements. We have a good relationship with Mazars and a strong track record in terms of concluding our accounts in line with all statutory deadlines and requirements, a feat many other councils failed to achieve, especially last year. I look forward to building strong relationships with whoever is appointed by the PSAA from this process going forward. Thank you. I'd like to second the recommendation.
Thank you. Does any member wish to speak on the report? Can I ask the council to approve, to accept the PSAA invitation to opt into the sector-led option for the appointment of external auditors for five financial years commencing the 1st of April 2023, in line with the views of the Audit Committee? Members? Can I move now to item twelve? Creation of Head of Services Role, Regeneration, Economy and Growth. Can I ask the Corporate Director of Regeneration, Economy and Growth to present the report, please?
Thank you, Chair, and good afternoon, everybody. This report is to seek approval from the council to create two Heads of Service roles within the Regeneration, Economy and Growth Directorate, which, within accordance with the council's pay policy, requires full council approval due to the salary of the post. The establishment of two Heads of Service roles is proposed as part of a review of the senior management structure across the Regeneration, Economy and Growth Directorate. The proposal includes the deletion of the current Head of Development and Housing and the creation of a Head of Economic Development and a Head of Planning and Housing. The existing tier-three structure for the Heads of Service for this Directorate is set out in section ten of this report. The rationale underpinning these proposals is to ensure that we have a Directorate and a council which has sufficient capacity and is designed to provide corporate and strategic leadership to ensure that the council delivers on its vision and priorities for our county. Section thirteen provides a highlight of the key and extensive functions, both operational, frontline, and strategic across these areas, including planning, supporting homelessness, as well as delivering major investments and support programmes for skills. As part of an ambitious programme, the current functions have in recent years absorbed considerable additional priorities. And it's essential that Durham County Council can deliver the new funding programmes and services which reside within the remit of this Directorate and within these services. And importantly, to continue to secure further investment and deliver services that support the prosperity of our economy and the wellbeing of our communities. Additional pressures have arisen from the success of the council on a number of external funding programmes, the establishment of new functions such as council house delivery, selective licensing, as well as considerable investments to support town centres and high streets and strategic employment sites. For example, levelling up funding, towns funding, future high streets, restoring our railways, as well as priorities such as the expansion of our site at Net Park. The new inclusive economic strategy is a priority for the county. In conversation with our communities, it will drive even more investment, opportunity and support programmes to support the economic prosperity of County Durham for businesses and communities to thrive. The proposed roles have been evaluated in line with the LGA Senior Management Scheme and have been accounted for at a council Head of Service Two of £105,671 per annum. The financial provision for these recommendations has been made within the 2022 and 2023 budget. And the final proposals will be subject to employee consultation. The council is recommended to improve the recommendations set out in section nine to approve the creation of the Head of Economic Development and the Head of Planning and Housing for the reasons outlined in this report. Chair, that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Can I have a mover for that report, please?
Thank you, Chair. Councillor Elizabeth Scott, Neville's Cross and portfolio holder for Economy and Partnerships. This is a vital senior resource to support our residents, communities and businesses. On reviewing the need for any senior role within the council, County Council takes care in considering the need for capacity and resource and always ensures that any additional costs are delivering a strong public benefit. Since May of last year, the County Council have seen incredible success with external bids and funding, including the levelling up fund, towns fund, a large selective licensing scheme and shortlisting for the City of Culture 2025. We've commenced our first inclusive economic strategy and have accelerated our exceptionally ambitious and secured agenda for the County Council, including a new proposal for the redevelopment of the former DLI and, as we expect, to bring to market the redevelopment of Akeley Heads later in 2022. I formally move this report and recommendations set out within it.
Can I have a second, please, for this report?
Thank you, Chair. I'm pleased to support the report. It is essential that we provide resource to support the public outcomes. This year, we have committed to an expanded council house build programme into more rural areas and continue to deliver exceptional and essential frontline services to support homelessness, planning and care connect services. We also deliver a range of business services to support the growth, including grant awards, skills programmes and advice services. We must continue to invest in these areas as we support our ambitious inclusive economic strategy, and I formally support the recommendations in the report. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Does any member wish to speak on the report? Richard Bell, councillor Bell?
Thank you, Chair. As members might expect, when these proposals come forward, we don't just say, yeah, okay, go on then. They get a lot of challenge from people like me in terms of budgetary consequences and necessity. So just to emphasise points that have already been made, it's the creation of one net new post, we're deleting one and creating two new posts. The workload has expanded significantly. You recall, we've now agreed a council house building programme of about 500 in housing. And in regen, if you look at all the schemes that are now getting to the implementation stage, future high streets, stronger towns in Bishop Auckland, levelling up bids across the county, there will be further work to be done on any devolution bid in terms of investment funding that we ask for, and then obviously have to implement and deliver. My considered view from a financial perspective is that it would be actually financially risky for this council not to appoint this additional person, as in, a lot of this external funding is on tight time scales and has to be returned to government if it isn't managed and delivered within agreed time scales. So it would actually, in my view, be risky financially for this council not to approve this recommendation today. Thank you, Chair.
Councillor Marshall?
Thanks, Chair, and thanks, Amy, for the report. I think, as we've heard in the previous debate, these are exceptional times for our council and for our community. And that's a word that we need to keep coming back to. I'd like to thank Richard and Amanda because, basically, with the agenda today, with the budget setting and the council tax setting and putting that up 3%, and now proposing to spend that money on two new heads of service.
Councillor Marshall, not a speech, please. Are you okay?
Sorry. We now, sorry, sorry, Chair. We now see the reason why the council tax is going up, and that's to pay for two new heads of service. I think this is the wrong, the wrong time to be considering this. I think it's absolutely frightening when the rest of the world and the rest of County Durham are tightening the belts, struggling to decide about whether to put the heat on or whether to feed the burns on a night, that we're here looking at two new heads of service roles for the council that cost a quarter million pound a year. You know, I think, you know, we need to be very, very careful here because this is one step too far for families to stomach this after today's meeting. I'm absolutely opposed to this in the current time, and I'd urge all members, for the sake of the communities and for holding any form of credibility for this council, to vote against it at this moment in time. Thanks, Chair.
I just apologise, Councillor Marshall, for the interruption. Councillor Wilkes?
Chair, for decades, residents in this county, and particularly in the Durham city area, have been pulling their hair out over planning issues. I, for one, am not willing to allow this to continue. For one of the biggest councils in the country to not have a head of planning would be extraordinary. Perhaps members opposite will be happy for this so they can continue block voting at planning meetings. I look forward to having an excellent head of planning, making sure planning in this county is fit for purpose and our green pelt is protected, not ripped up by members opposite. Recently, we had a planning application in my patch to convert an old two-bed miner's cottage into a four-bed house of multiple occupation. I look forward to stronger planning department, making sure that Labour politicians can't continue to force through horrendous planning applications, converting decent ex-miners' homes into substandard properties.
Point of order. Yes, yes?
Chair, I just want you to make the point that planning committees aren't political. Sorry, Chair, we need to be very, very careful about throwing around accusations like that in here because we've all been through the train of planning. We know the consequences, not just for us as individuals, but for the council, of bandying stuff like that around in here. It's totally out of order, Chair.
You make a good point, Paul. Stick to the script, please, Councillor Wilkes. Yes? Wait, wait, wait.
Councillor Paul Taylor-Brandon, division. I was Chair of the Eastern Central Planning Committee for several years. Can councillor Wilkes confirm what accusation he's making against me? Because I refute it absolutely. There is no politics in planning.
Chair, point of order has already been raised and dealt with. The point of order's been raised and dealt with.
Councillor Marshall, sort of that out for you, councillor.
The breach of council procedure rules or legislation, the point has been made that planning committees are apolitical and not being whipped, and councillor Marshall has, councillor Marshall has, you know, expressed the position of your, on your behalf. The Chair has accepted the point.
Okay, we'll move on. Councillor Wilkes? Turn it down, though. Councillor Wilkes?
Okay, thank you, Chair. And actually, councillor Taylor, you're one of the few Labour councillors who I did have regard for on planning, standing up for Durham city.
Stop it now, please.
But I'd like to move on from planning to economic development. And Chair, for decades...
Excuse me, councillor Wilkes, councillor Thursties, you have a point of order.
It is the point of order about the planning committee comment, but I would like councillor Wilkes to withdraw that statement publicly, please.
Chair, I'm happy to withdraw that, and we'll see what happens at the next planning meeting. Chair, for decades, this county, run by Labour, has also underperformed with economic development, well below the national average. And councillor Marshall may be happy for this county to continue to underperform and for residents to continue to live in poverty for the sake of one additional head of service. I'm not. Perhaps he's just terrified the joint administration wants to help people out of poverty and into work, providing jobs and economic development. Maybe he thinks fewer people will vote Labour. Well, that's one thing you could be right about today. For one of the biggest councils in the country to have no economic policy and no head of economic development would be absurd. Chair, the previous Labour administration left us completely void of capacity to move our economy forward, to protect residents from dodgy development and to ensure we have housing policies fit for the 21st century. We must make sure that new and existing housing is energy efficient as possible. We must ensure we have proper strategies and capacity to make our housing more energy efficient, helping ensure we cut residents' energy bills and get the most energy efficient new housing possible. I support putting in place exactly what is needed to build a better future for this county. Anyone voting against this is voting against improving job prospects for our residents and therefore against cutting poverty, as well as being against improving planning in our county.
Councillor Eddie Adam, please?
Thank you, Chair. Councillor Eddie Adam, representing Acliff West. In supporting the recommendation made by my colleague councillor Marshall, it is right to reject the creation of these Heads of Service posts that have been, that have a combined salary of over £211,000. And it isn't right for councillor Wilkes to have spurious accusations thrown at this side of the political sphere because planning is not a political issue. Councillor Wilkes' cheap dig to justify creating an additional cost to our taxpayers is unacceptable. Unlike my colleague councillor Marshall, I find this to be an unacceptable proposal at this current time when our residents are experiencing and will continue to experience severe hardship due to, as we have heard earlier today, the emerging cost of living crisis, now a hike in their council tax and government-imposed national insurance increases. I and my colleagues believe there is no clear or acceptable justification for the creation of these two senior posts and their associated six-figure sums. Our taxpayers should not be expected to pick up this additional budget cost of over £120,000 during these unprecedented and uncertain times. Chair? Chair, this report presented to us today by the officer and cabinet portfolio holder does not demonstrate value added or necessity. It does not provide background reports or even specific...
One minute member.
Or even specific detail related to the stated ongoing service-wide restructure. Neither does it consider involving scrutiny in the restructuring process. Therefore Chair, this council cannot and should not approve these significant additional costs. I therefore ask the council to reject this report.
councillor Hopgood?
Thanks Chair. This county has sadly been at the bottom of the economic pile for decades, all the time whilst Labour have been in control here and for many years with a Labour Prime Minister representing a Durham constituency. These posts will facilitate and deliver our ambitious investment targets. There's one thing that I'm going to agree with councillor Marshall on from this morning and that is we shouldn't be celebrating poverty. There is no reason to celebrate poverty and these posts are there to create jobs, to facilitate development, to bring opportunities for people. You can't have it both ways. You can't want to take people out of poverty and stop the very method of being able to do that in creating jobs, opportunity and ambition for people in this county. And I'm so disappointed to hear that somebody who had that portfolio just this time last year stand up and say that this isn't something he can support. I would urge members that this is fully costed, that we have looked into this, that we've got developments and we have external funding coming through to support these posts and these posts are essential to give that hope, opportunity and investment that County Durham have lacked for too many years.
councillor Sexton?
Yeah, thank you Chair. At the start of this meeting councillor Crute eloquently highlighted what he believed was a misleading social media post around the council tax increase. I then went on to explain, as did others, around the social care precept and what that meant and the reason why we had to do it. Councillor Marshall has just again misled you. We've said several times and the leaders just echoed that as well, is a deletion of a post and a creation of a new role and one additional post. Yeah? Those are the facts, all fully costed, not two, yeah? So maybe councillor Marshall can maybe stop the spin and maybe start challenging in real terms and we need investment and optimism in this county to create jobs and to create a future. We can't stand still. So less of the pessimism, more optimism please.
councillor Joblin?
Sorry, thank you. Just to say that I think that we are getting the wrong feedback for this because inflating, conflating the 3% increase with these two appointments, they've got nothing to do with one another and as it is only actually one appointment, so we need to get that clear. Also, when we came in as a joint administration, I was absolutely thrilled because I knew immediately that County Durham would start growing and growing in the right way, making jobs, being entrepreneurial and providing more jobs, more housing so that our residents can come up from where they've been for the last hundred years under Labour. So make no mistake, this administration is going to push this council forward and we don't just talk the talk, we walk the walk.
councillor Howie?
Thank you Chair, councillor Howie from Woodhouse Close Division. Do we not want to move forward at last? Bishop Auckland has won some of these grants because we've had people there to put it in place but other places didn't get the levelling up grants. We need somebody to be able to do this on time and get those grants good enough to go in for people so other parts of County Durham are progressive and they go forward and do the best that they can for the residents. If we can get more levelling up funds, we will then level up the jobs and level up education, everything will follow suit. So let's be positive and let's go forward and bring somebody on board so that we can do the best we can for County Durham as a whole.
councillor Charlton Leon?
Rochelle Charlton-Lennie, I would just like to draw your attention again to another wonderful Conservative leaflet that was given out. I've got loads of examples of these. This one reads, "They waste your money and keep asking for more. We will make the council look for internal savings, including how much directors and executive officers are paid. Now, we know you talk the talk but you also write it down and every time you write it down, we're going to keep bringing it out and exposing the fact that you're lying." Now, these are not my words, these are the Conservative words written on Conservative leaflets that were handed out to residents in County Durham. So these two things, the budget and the head of roles that we're creating, they are directly related and they come down to a budget that's going to leave our residents in poverty for the rest of time. Thank you.
councillor Quinn? councillor Quinn? Go on. Oh, go on, sorry, I've got Quinn. Go on, sorry.
Thank you Chair, I'll forgive you. I'd just like to say it almost takes my breath away to hear councillor Hopgood talk about nothing happening under Labour. Councillor Hopgood has celebrated Net Park, frequently I might add, in this council chamber. Net Park was established under Labour councillor Hopgood and when Tony Blair was the Prime Minister, I might add. You celebrate that and you take credit for that and then you call out Labour in this meeting and I find that hypocritical, entirely hypocritical. Let's look at the other things under Labour. We've got Attachi, we've got Amazon, we've got business parks all over this county. So do not stand up in this council and say that nothing happened under Labour. Labour brought jobs to this county over a long period of time and made this county strong. I support my colleagues Chair with this resolution that's going forward but I wanted to make those points very clearly. Thank you.
Sorry about the mistake there councillor Gunn. Looked like Quinn to me. councillor Shield?
Thank you Chair. Let's be specific about this, the potential for the economy of this county is some £12 billion. The best it has ever achieved is £9 billion. Lot has been said today about financial hardship and the root out of poverty and councillor Marshall actually said, "We need to look at the root cause." But let me tell you what the root cause is. The root cause out of poverty lies in more and better jobs, raising aspirations and providing opportunities for all. This economic strategy and transport, education, skills and training opportunities are vital. We also need to approve our approach that is intelligence-led and fully inclusive, harnessing the opportunities from digital connectivity whilst recognising that not all of our residents can easily access it, so ensuring we continue to provide other ways of those individuals reaching the support they need. We are working to ensure that there is a clear alignment across both our approach to tackling poverty and our economic strategy whilst working hard to maintain a strong safety net of support for financially vulnerable households, particularly those in crisis. We've seen an increase in demand for the support and have aligned our resource and continued to align our resource to ensure that we can deliver that support in a timely way and we have also improved our internal processes so no matter which service and individual accesses, there are clear pathways to other support services which can assist with maximising households' income. I endorse this proposal, thank you, of one person, one additional cost, not the two, which has been misrepresented again by members of the opposition group. Thank you.
councillor Hovell?
Thank you Chair. I read the report very carefully and it put a nasty taste in my mouth. That taste hasn't gone away, that taste did lay. I can't support this this morning, I think the timing is totally wrong. We've just had that council tax report and we've debated the precept and again, we're coming back and we're going out there to tell the residents because they'll have to pay for it. Yes, you might get some grants for it but you've got to match them grants and it's not straightforward. I think the report should be deferred, it should be put back at a later time and I won't support this this morning Chair.
councillor McGowan?
Thank you Chair. I don't often speak at these things, I leave it to people who are far better at public speaking than I do but I'm, I feel moved today to speak in particular to councillor Marshall's remark that we have increased council tax to pay for these two posts. A, that is factually incorrect and B, one would have thought that councillor Marshall having had one of his friends being elected as a police and crime commissioner and being moved over the last nine months to increase their staff by five from 16 to 21 and then subsequently put up the council tax or the police precept of the council tax by 4.34% to what I believe is paying for the staff, I find unpalatable. The second point I'd like to make is I think we should be very, very careful about picking up people on social media or literature that goes out for the constant trolling that this half of the House receives from the Labour as well as the factually incorrect, some people may call them lies.
Remember it's a debate on the rules.
But it was brought up by councillors of what's been going out, leader. So let's have a look at what's on the leader, what's on the opposition leader's page before we start picking in-house.
Okay councillor, thank you. Members, come on, it's on the report, the creation of these positions, not on social media or anything else. councillor McKeown?
Thank you very much Chair. I was quite surprised to hear colleagues across the aisle talk about how Labour did nothing for regeneration and job growth. That's really going to come as a surprise to the people of Bowburn and Tursdale who've had a massive Amazon warehouse built behind them with more planning applications going in for more jobs to be created on that site. And I also wanted to pick up on opportunity and on ambition. Well, it wasn't Labour that troubled my tuition fees and it wasn't Labour that scrapped the educational maintenance allowance either, it was another coalition of Conservatives and...
You're off the script councillor, sorry about that. Can you keep to the script or do you want to sit down?
I'm happy to continue Chair.
About the creation of these posts?
I'm getting to that Chair, thank you. We all know that poverty in this county is only addressed by better jobs as well as more jobs. Over 70% of the families that live in poverty across the country have at least one parent in employment. What that tells us is that we've got an epidemic in this country of low pay and bad conditions and with that backdrop and with the cost of living crisis backdrop, I think this is the wrong time to be proposing something like this. I understand the arguments that have already been made across this room and I'd like to thank Amy and her team and all the officers for the hard work that they do but this is quite tinny to the people in my area who work a very hard day's work and still can't afford to feed their children. Thank you.
councillor Walton?
councillor Michelle Walton, Dels Lane division. I just wanted to clarify a point Chair, that was made by one of our colleagues about leaflets where we had said we would be addressing the wages and salaries of senior staff. Page 271, for those who haven't actually read the report, clearly states that this head of service new role is on a lower salary than the current head of service role. I just wanted to make that very clear for any future leaflets. Thank you.
councillor Miller?
The chief executives already asked her, but thank you very much.
Okay councillor Miller?
councillor Miller, Trimpton-Thorny division. Fraser stole my thunder there because I was going to apologise to Amy for standing there, having to listen to this. I won't be agreeing to this, I think that level of salary when other people, you know, I echo what councillors on this side have said and to quote councillor Joblin, "In the real world where I live, people aren't paid a fraction of that salary. People knock on my door begging for food, I give up my Sunday mornings to deliver food, as do my colleagues in the division. That's the real world where we come from and I won't be supporting that salary or this creation."
councillor Tinsley, you were requested to speak but you brought up a point of order. Do you still want to speak or, okay. There's nobody else requested to speak. There's a hand there, Elizabeth? Oh councillor, you have the right to reply councillor Scott.
Thank you Chair, can I just deal with one inaccuracy, another inaccuracy from this morning's meeting? Councillor Hopgood did not say that Labour did nothing, she said that we were bottom of the economic pile and I'm afraid she's absolutely right. When I had the privilege of taking up this role, I inherited a situation where Durham County Council, one of the largest in the country, had no economic strategy, no substantive head of planning, no head of service for economic development. And yet, the previous administration, now in opposition, are happy to come here time and time again and moan and complain about government and its failings while doing nothing to elevate this county to its rightful place in the economy. These posts are about jobs, skills, realising ambition. Councillor Marshall mentioned the causes of poverty needing to be addressed. Well, here's something that will actually help because that's what we're about in this joint administration, actually getting things done. Anyone who doesn't vote for these posts is giving a clear and direct message to residents and businesses that they are happy to do nothing but keep on complaining. For everyone else, let's vote in favour... For everyone else, let's vote in favour and crack on with the work that we know needs to be done.
Right members, we'll go to the vote, I'll pass you over to the legal people who will take us through this process, hang on, there's a hand up there. Yes councillor?
Have you got ten members to support you?
Okay, named vote.
The vote will be recorded in the minutes. So we're voting on item 12, the creation of head of service roles, regeneration, economy and growth, it's one in favour, two against, three to abstain. As always, if you press the wrong button, pressing the right one corrects your vote. Votes open.
Mobile phones members please.
Closing the vote.
Members, 461 against 48 with one abstention, recommendation is approved. That brings us to item 13 members, questions from members, no questions have been submitted for today's meeting. That concludes today's business, before the meeting finishes I would like to thank everyone for taking part and for those members of the public and media who have watched this meeting, thank you for your attendance. Can you wait until the broadcast is finished?